You're listening to popcorn and politics. What's the real deal? Hosted by Audrey Bell Kearney and Derek J. Wilson. Asking the hard hitting questions you want answers to. From political leaders and political hopefuls from around the world.
Good afternoon, good afternoon and happy new year. We are officially into January two thousand and twenty-two. Happy new year, everybody.
Happy new year. Hey, Audrey, how you doing?
Hey, Derek, how you been? How's your new year?
It's been great. It's been great. You know, I feel like we just got here.
No pun intended. We did just get here. I hope you do for New Year's.
Uh, well, we popped some fireworks. We, uh, if, if, if you follow me on social media, you saw that my kids and I were out at midnight. We was putting on a show. And yes, I did take my nap because I am over thirty and I wouldn't have made it make it to midnight if it was if I wasn't taking no nap. But we, uh, we did that. And then the next, you know, once we went to sleep and woke back up, I, I did some work. You know, I'm always working and then.
So your family is one of them families that was disturbing the peace all day going night long. Like it was people.
Oh, yeah.
I got home, we went to see Spider-Man. So we went to the late show because I was like, okay. We haven't, we haven't gone out to do anything probably in ten years on New Year's Eve. So we decided we were gonna go to the movies because, you know, everything is just rampant with COVID. I was like, listen, I know we go to the movies. We can sit far away from everybody, which we did, which is great. But we knew that we would bring the, the New Year's in at the movie. So you know, there's an old country saying, whatever you're doing on New Year's, that's what you're gonna be doing all year long. So I guess I'll be at the movies all year long. Yeah, watching movies.
I will be popping fireworks on.
Well, you do that anyway. You pop them for every occasion. I see the videos. I'm playing them. Um, but when we got home, it was like twelve thirty and people pop fireworks probably good to around two thirty-ish. So I, I said, look at them disturbing the peace. They better not have shot no guns though, because the solicitor general had already said, you shoot a gun.
Catching. You're going to jail. And then, I mean, since you brought that up, I would hate to have been the one to go to jail because then they announced that due to COVID, that the Solicitor General Office will, will, will be closing, you know, in the month of January. I'm pretty sure they will be doing some type of virtual, but, uh, that just right there just delayed your chances of getting out a little quicker.
Ooh, if you got caught, God be with you. You know, your first two days in jail, you're going, the first two days of the year, you spend them in jail. How crazy is that? Somebody did it though. Somebody went to jail on New Year's.
Yeah, yeah, somebody. I'm pretty sure somebody did. Uh, well, speaking of the new year, uh, last week between our last show, uh, we had some, a, a couple of noted notable deaths. Uh, the first notable in politics is, uh, Senator Harry Reid. Uh, he's the former Democrat Senate Leader. Uh, that was basically the one that was helping us out during Obama years. Uh, he passed away at the age of eighty-two.
Knows this.
Yes, and then, and then almost made it to twenty-two was Betty Wright. Uh, man. Betty White, yeah, my bad. I'm talking about the wrong one.
No, Betty White, not the cleanup woman.
Yeah, Betty, Betty White. It was, was, was ironic about that. I was just, just reading her article about her hundredth celebration, how she was saying she was in such great health. And then, um, Maria sends me a text and I was like, I thought it was, had to be a hoax because I'm like, I just literally read her article like two hours ago. And yeah, that was sad, but you know, ninety-nine and eighty-two, those are, uh, of years that I think at that point you, you know, if it happens, you just say, you know, Lord bless their life. They had a great life and, and, um, go on.
I got, we got to do one more though. Madden, Madden pass. And I know.
Oh, yeah, he, yeah.
Yeah, man, John Madden, let me tell you something. My nephew, I have two nephews, right? My oldest nephew, I tell you no lie, Derek, every time a game came out, a Madden game came out, we had to scour the earth to look for that game. It was ridiculous. I'm talking about it. Whenever it came out and it was so funny because my, this is my nephew would do, he would call my mom and I'd say, Nana, Madden two thousand sixteen coming out, Madden two thousand eight coming out, Matt, Nana. And she's like, Trey called. And he said Madden two thousand seven is coming out tomorrow. I'd be like, listen, ain't nobody got time to go be looking for no Madden for Trey. But what did I do? Because I'm a great aunt. I go scour the earth and find whatever Madden edition came out. So Madden left a, a legacy as well. Um, in the sports world and the gaming world and.
Yes, yes, he did.
So.
Yeah, I don't wanna, I don't wanna, uh, put my age. I already said I'm over thirty, but I remember when Madden was like you know, on the Nintendo, you know, and, and Madden, Madden came a long way. I mean, you went from playing the video games to, my son, he just got a PlayStation five for Christmas. And so he has the new Madden twenty-two, I guess, or twenty-one, whichever, the, the one that has, uh, Tom Brady and, uh, old buddy from KC, Patrick Mahomes, have him on, had him on the cover. And so I walked by his room and it was like a Tuesday night. And I said, I said, man, who playing? Who playing on a Tuesday? He like, Dad, I'm playing the game. I'm like.
Graphic, man, the graphics in those, in those games, I mean, they are beautiful.
I swear, I thought he was really watching the game. I'm like, who's playing on a Tuesday? This must be a rerun. But yeah, so that was, that, that, you know, yeah, so, yeah, three notable heavy, you know, heavy, you know, heavyweight that, uh, that left us this past week. I mean, and only crazy enough, we only been separated for seven days and, 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 yeah. And so any other news you want before we jump into our special guest?
I was scouring my news feeds and, and I saw what popped up on my Twitter and apparently Marjorie Taylor Greene has been totally permanently suspended from Twitter. Because once again, she's putting out false information. And so this time she put out some false information from, from some data that she gated, she, uh, collected from a system that was, uh, dilapidated, outdated and whatever you and put it out about the vaccines and that the deaths that were happening because of the vaccines. And so Twitter said, you know what? That's her fifth strike. Now normally you get three strikes. For some reason she got five. Maybe Twitter, Twitter gives out five strikes. They were like, that's her fifth strike. Now she's permanently banned from Twitter because of the information she put out about the vaccine causing death. So I just, you know, she did. She's right here in Georgia, y'all. She's out, she's Georgia grown and, um, yeah.
Yeah, I think she got a hold of a bad batch of peaches.
That was a good one. She might, she might have. That is a good one.
A bad batch of peaches.
Yeah.
But, uh, well, look, on some, on some lighter news and better news, uh, yeah, we have our special guest today, uh, Mr. Austin Thompson, Jr. He is the newly elected city councilman post-three for the city of Lawrenceville. He's the first immigrant-born city councilman of African descent of the city of Lawrenceville. He's originally from the cooperative Republican Republic of Guyana. He gonna get me for messing that one up. Which is a South, South America and a Caribbean Latin American region country. Uh, he, he, he's a great friend as we bring him in, yours truly, the, the honorable councilman, Austin Thompson.
Welcome, welcome, welcome to Popcorn Politics.
Oh, man, I, you know, I'm, I'm present, but I forgot my popcorn, but it's all good.
Oh, yeah, we did too. Y'all did.
We wanted to do better in the new year. We done kicked off the new year.
I mean, we getting it. It's on, it's on back order due to, uh, due to, you know.
I had enough Friday night though, y'all. For real. Like the movies, I had a big bucket, so it was good.
Uh, oh, okay, okay. It's stuck on the loading dock up in the ports of LA.
Yeah, yeah.
Or the Port of Savannah.
You can't get it out.
Oh, man, but thank you.
For, um, being our guest today. Congratulations on your win. I, I remember when I, um, I was driving down Kroger Monday, right before the election. I think it was the day before the election. And I started standing on the corner of, uh, Jackson and Kroger and I took your picture. You didn't, because I was in the car. And I took a picture and I sent it to Derek. I said, Austin is going away because I, it was like, it was a Sunday, I think, or something, or, or Monday. And you were standing out there with the sign. I was like, he is determined to win and you won. So congratulations Monday. That just goes to show when you put your mind to it and you're dedicated, anything can happen. So congratulations.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
It, it shows, you know, dedication, perseverance, because, uh, I let you tell your story, but you know, this is not his first time running. And so, you know, kudos to you because I've seen, I don't know, I mean, was that the first time I met you and you was running? Or that was like the third or fourth being?
Uh, no, no, we met, uh, right before I ran the first time.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, we initially met at the, uh, Gwinnett County Fair.
Right.
Yeah.
I remember that. So from, to go from there to actually see you win, like, I guess I can say I actually saw the whole, the whole work. Because I mean, because when Austin ran in eighteen, was it eighteen? No, nineteen.
Twenty nineteen.
Austin ran in twenty nineteen, most people, when they run and, and if they don't win, then that's just, you know, okay, it wasn't meant to be. I'm, I'm finding something else to do in my life. Austin, if I'm not mistaken, he can correct me if I'm wrong, the election was November, whatever. The two days later, Austin is at the next coffee with a candidate with his sign up, you know, I'm running for something. Come meet me. So, yeah, you gotta stay at it. And, uh, it was just perfect timing. Uh, I said in my last show, I believe in timing. And, uh, this is the right time for, uh, to have you, as well as, let's not forget, uh, um, Marlene Taylor Crawford, she won as well. She, uh, and she's post-four, right?
Yeah, she's post-four.
And she's post-four. So congratulations. I mean, let's just, what, four years ago, Lawrenceville never had an African-American or anyone of African descent on the council. And four years later, they have three.
Three.
So, yeah, and it's only five people on the, on the, uh, you know, you got the mayor and then four posts, right?
Four posts, right, exactly.
So three out of the five are of African descent. So that just tells you, uh, not only is Gwinnett County as a whole is becoming my more diverse, but the cities are starting to reflect that as well. So kudos to all you all on, on the, uh, city council of Lawrenceville.
Thank you, thank you.
I just want you to give a backdrop of where you, of your history, because I met you, you probably don't even remember this. You had an event at Discovery High School, an entrepreneurship event. And I, I had just moved here. You had a, a conference and I had just moved to Georgia. That probably was around fourteen, thirteen, between fourteen and fifteen.
Between fourteen and fifteen, right, yeah.
At Discovery. But I know you had this, you had a consulting agency, so you, you, you do that. But what made you want to get into politics? Let's, let's give it a little bit of backstory.
Well, you know, um, first off, immigrated from the Cooperative Republic of Guyana, uh, to Brooklyn, New York. And grew up in Brooklyn, um, in a predominantly Caribbean Latin American, uh, community, um, in public housing. Um, I'm always proud to mention that because, you know, I like for people to know that, yeah, you can be an immigrant, grow up in public housing and still make a success of your life. It's not where you're from, it's where you're at. And, um, and it's not, um, to be, you're not to be a victim of your circumstance because you can always move past that. But growing up in Brooklyn, um, I came, I came from a family, uh, that was, that was very steeped in politics, you know, politics coming from Guyana and the Caribbean Latin American politics, but now as immigrants in the United States, that continued for my family. So it was later, later, in later years, uh, I was at Medgar Everest College. I was a student at Medgar Everest College. Um, and I had a classmate who was actually a volunteer with Jesse Jackson's campaign, the second time that Jesse Jackson ran for president. And, um, he was with the Long Island University LIU Brooklyn campus, uh, LIU campus in Brooklyn. And, uh, we were sitting in class one day and this was before the professor came in and, uh, started class. And he said, hey, Austin, you know, um, you know, you ever thought about volunteering, uh, for a political campaign? And he asked me how old I am. I said, well, you know, I'm eighteen. And I had, I had previously registered as soon as I turned eighteen for, um, to, you know, I was eligible to vote. So I, I, I registered, I registered a vote and, um, and then, you know, I, I really had no interest at that time in volunteering for political campaigns. Not that I, not that it was a turnoff or anything, but I, I just, you know, my life was, was different. I was, I was, you know, eighteen, I was just starting college. I was young. I really didn't know anything about, you know, the, the political landscape here. And, you know, he, he proceeded to have a discussion with me about, you know, Jesse Jackson, if I know who he was. I said, yeah, he ran before, you know, and lost and so on and so forth. And he said, man, why don't you come on down, man, and, and meet some folks in, uh, in the office? And if you, if you're interested in volunteering, we could definitely use your help. And that was it. I was hooked. You know, I volunteered on Reverend Jesse Jackson's campaign, um, and, you know, going out in the community, talking to folks. And I didn't do it on my own. I did it with other volunteers who were older than me and, you know, much more seasoned at it. But I got the bug then. And, um, ever since then, I was always volunteering for some local politician who was running. And when I left, and, and, and that was like eighty-seven, when, um, when I, um, when I met this gentleman, uh, because it was eighty-seven when I, when I turned eighteen. And fast forward to ninety-two, when I moved to Georgia, um, you know, uh, Bill Clinton, you know, was running for president that year. And, um, volunteered on that campaign, um, you know, and, and, you know, I, I was just excited about, you know, being involved politically. And, um, and not just being involved politically, but getting to know what the various, uh, positions were, like commission, uh, board chairperson, commission, uh, city council person, you know, a state representative. At that time, I didn't really know much about the state representation, um, as far as state representative and senator and so on and so forth. And I had to really learn those positions and, 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 um, you know, what they, what they, the importance that they were to the, to the state. And it grew and I grew. Over the years, I just, uh, volunteered, uh, on various campaigns. I volunteered, uh, to either knock doors. I volunteered for fundraisers. I volunteered for phone banking and, and, you know, it, it just grew from there. In twenty-twelve, uh, I, out of the blue, I was, I was a Democrat at large, uh, so I never belonged to any particular chapter. And in twenty-twelve, uh, all out the blue, I got some information in the mail about running as a delegate. And, um, I remember going over to Central Gwinnett High School and, and that's where I met, uh, many of the Gwinnett Democrats that are friends today. And I remember pulling up to Central Gwinnett and folks were like in T-shirts, they had signs. And I'm like, I had nothing but a speech. And, you know, and, and I decided, well, you know, I, I felt nervous, but I said, I just go in there, just say your speech. And if you win, you win. If you don't, you don't. And, and I, and I said my speech was three minutes. You had to basically, you had to basically say your speech in three minutes. And, um, you know, so I did it. And I was like the last, it was, I think it was like twelve delegates or something like that. I was the last person mentioned. Uh, I was the last person, um, announced as, as, as a delegate for the twenty-twelve DNC in Charlotte, North Carolina. You know, and then since then, I decided to, to be more active with, uh, with the Gwinnett Democrats. Um, volunteered on many of the, the campaigns of various, um, members, Donna McCloud, uh, being one, Jenna S. Sudan, uh, who is, who is no longer in Gwinnett, she's over in Rockdale, but, uh, volunteered on her campaign and, and, and so on, man. So it's, it's been a great, it's been a great journey, um, learning about the political process, being active, uh, and, and helping, helping, uh, political candidates, um, reach their goal. Whether they fall short of it or they, they were, uh, successful, it was a good experience for everybody.
Wow, what? For those who, yeah, oh, I'm sorry. No, for those of you who don't know the individuals you named, uh, did any of them win? Did they have any titles? So we, you know?
Well, Jenna S. Sudan ran for school board, uh, Gwinnett County School Board. She, she was, she ran unsuccessfully. Uh, Donna McCloud ran unsuccessfully the first time and was successful the second time that she ran. So she's now serving, um, in House District one oh five.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah.
Look at that. He got some wins under his belt.
Donna's coming on the twenty-third, I think. When is Donna coming up? Donna's coming up soon.
Uh, she's coming up in, uh, two thousand twenty, about this year. Um, we're, we're in the new year, right?
Right, yeah.
Yeah, you know, things move so fast. So she is, um, actually in the primary, um, against Lucy Macbeth and Carolyn Bordeaux for, um, the congressional district seven, uh, congressional, you know, seat, the US congressional seat. So, you know, yeah, so she's.
She'll be a guest on the show on, uh, January twenty-third.
Okay, great, great, great. Yeah.
Man, you're, you're the, uh, what they call the parade person that leads the parade, uh. Yeah, well, you're the first one. You're like, you're the late lead, leader of an awesome lineup that we have scheduled for January.
That's great. That's great.
We were scrambling to try to find something like, man, we need to find a good dynamic. And, uh, you know, I was harassing you. Hey, Austin, Austin, Austin. You know, being I'm from Houston, I like Austin. I know, I know Austin. That's the, you know, that, you know, that's the state capital.
Yeah, you know. And you know, the funny thing, I know, I know you, you chased me down, but ever since I won that election, I have been on just about everybody's podcast. I've, I've been interviewed. I've, I've, um, been asked to come and do videos and so on and so forth. It's great because, you know, I, I, I really like to get my message out and especially for young African-American males and females, you know? Um, I love to tell my story because I don't come from, uh, a background where I had a silver spoon in my mouth. I don't come from a background, um, with, with, with green pastures. I, you know, I, I, I literally have to pull up my bootstraps and just work hard, you know, and just, yeah, take, take the knockdowns, take, take the drop kicks and just get right back up and keep moving, you know? So, um, yeah, man, nothing was ever paved for me. I had to really, you know, lay the bricks as I kept going, you know? So I like for people to understand that no matter where you are and if it's not a desirable position, just keep working hard at it. Just keep working, never give up, man. And you, 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 you won't believe it, that you'll actually get to where you want to be in life.
Speaking of giving up, you have gotten to, you have gotten to this place in Gwinnett County in Lawrenceville. And, you know, we're excited. I'm in Lawrenceville. I live in Lawrenceville. Um, I think I'm in unincorporated Lawrenceville. I'm still trying to understand. I'm from Jersey, so I'm still trying to understand. Unincorporated, like what does that mean? It's like one town for anyway. You know, what, what are your vision, what's your vision for, um, Lawrenceville now that you have, um, become our councilman? And tell it, tell it, because people like me, what does that mean to live in unincorporated Lawrenceville versus incorporated? And do you serve both?
Right. Well, I served residents with, uh, within the city of Lawrenceville. That's incorporated Lawrenceville, right? So we have about, I, I say, I say thirty-one thousand plus, uh, residents. Uh, because wherever you, you, you get your source of information, you know, some places will say thirty-two thousand, some say thirty-three thousand, you know, so, so I say thirty-one thousand plus, um, residents. So about between thirty-one and thirty-three thousand residents within incorporated Lawrenceville, within the city limits of Lawrenceville. Now, if you're within the city limits of Lawrenceville, all of your services, all your services are coming from the city. Your representation is coming from the city council, right? If you're in unincorporated, that means, um, doesn't necessarily mean that all your services are coming from the county. You may have, um, like your electric bill or so on, coming from the city of Lawrenceville. But your services, like if you, if you need, um, any attention, um, to a, a particular challenge or issue, you would actually have to go to the county, um, Gwinnett County in order to get that assistance and that service. But if you are within the city of Lawrenceville, um, the city limits, then the city manages one hundred percent of your services.
Okay, okay. So I know you have a real.
Oh, sorry. Well, not, and so to understand, uh, the council is, is it, is it set up like the commission where, you know, District Three Commissioner is my commissioner? So post-three, you would be my councilman if I lived in a certain area or is it citywide?
We're all, we're all at large in our positions. So, uh, one, two, three, and four doesn't necessarily, um, represent a particular area of the city. So I will be a councilman, I'll be a council representative for all residents in the city of Lawrenceville, right? We all, yeah, we all serve on the city council to work along with the mayor, uh, to make decisions, to, to, to pass policy um, in the form of ordinances and to work along with the city manager and the other city officials. But we, we don't represent a particular area of the city. It's basically at large.
Okay.
So now you have a, you, you wanted to see what's your vision moving, moving, for moving, because Lawrenceville is moving fast. Like Lawrenceville is growing. It has beautiful development going. So I don't even, I mean, what's the vision? Because is it, what's the vision?
Yeah, my, well, in Lawrenceville, um, for generations, it's been a city that's, um, that's represented a, a, a certain demographic, right? Um, and we've had residents in this city that felt, um, underserved, underrepresented. Um, and felt as if the city was moving in a direction that did not include them, right? The city is very progressive in terms of the construction you've seen, um, the, the construction on the Lawrenceville lawn. Uh, well, now we have a full amphitheater. You see the mixed-use facilities, restaurants and, and, and residential areas. Uh, you see the, you see the, uh, Lawrenceville Arts Center being built, adjoined to the Aurora Theater. Um, we see City View, which is another, um, uh, residential area that's being developed. Uh, it, it should be about a hundred percent complete. Uh, we, we see a lot of development in Lawrenceville, right? When I wrote my vision plan, and I know Derek cracked on me about that. He said, you, you wrote a dissertation. When I wrote my vision plan, you know, I was really serious about, um, pointing out and identifying all of the key areas in which I wanted to, to focus on. Um, economic development is one of them, right? Now, we know when economic development, uh, comes, you know, um, the appreciation of property value and, you know, also with the raising of taxes, property taxes and so on and so forth. I know a lot of residents have concerns about that. But I want to basically look at economic development in a favorable manner, where we can actually invite a company to take a look at setting up a division here in Lawrenceville that actually, um, um, presents an opportunity for living wage jobs, right? Now, the median household, the median, the median household, um, income is about fifty-three, fifty-four thousand, right? When we look at the average home value in Lawrenceville, it's somewhere between two hundred and sixty to three hundred thousand, right? Now you see, you see homes being built all over Lawrenceville, um, with a price tag of about three hundred thousand, right? Apartments, very nice properties, very nice properties, but a one bedroom alone is like fifteen, sixteen hundred dollars a month, right? Now, if you're, if you're, if you are a resident and you're making, even if, let's say, even if you were making a living wage, which is considered anywhere from fifteen dollars and up, right? It's still unaffordable for a lot of residents in our city, right? We, we have, um, construction of new properties being built. But what I want to make sure, I, on the city council and as far, and, and it's, and it's along the lines of economic development because we have to look at discretionary income, right? We have to look at adding jobs that are bringing salaries to, to, to workers, um, of fifteen to, to fifteen to eighteen to twenty dollars an hour, right? Residents who have that opportunity, working for those positions, will now have increased discretionary income to go out and shop and spend money within the local areas, local bars, restaurants, retail outlets, go to a matinee at the Aurora Theater, Lawrenceville Arts Center, so on and so forth, right? That's always good because now we have an, an increased cash infusion into the business sector of the city because, you know, individuals are making more money. So I want to be able to, to make sure that, um, when I'm reviewing plans, uh, we are looking at companies that wouldn't mind taking a look at Lawrenceville. Hey, I, I have a division. I have a manufacturing division. We're looking for a location. All right, we're looking at Alpharetta. We're looking at Dunwoody. We're looking, you know, here, there and everywhere. Hey, what about Lawrenceville? You know, and what are those salaries? So I want to be able to, I want to be able to, to, to be a part of that decision-making, right? Um, another thing is a transportation shuttle. Uh, so we, I know, I know, um, Derek presented to me what, what I want to do within my first hundred days and these things that I want to present. A transportation shuttle, um, I believe, uh, will be, uh, a very successful addition to the city. I've taken a look at, um, other cities with a similar size of Lawrenceville. Now, Thanksgiving week, I was out in Fort Walton Beach, Destin, Florida. Um, I was enjoying the beach. I was enjoying the beach life. But I wasn't really just relaxing. I was harassing city officials too, if I saw, you know? I was questioning, they, they have a shuttle that goes around Destin, the Fort Walton Beach. So I reached out to, um, the person who manages that service and I was asking questions about, you know, um, about the shuttle service, how it operates, so on and so forth. I was looking at other cities, uh, in Jersey, um, in Minnesota, you know, again, in municipalities that are similar size. Because I wanted to really see how it benefits, what is the benefit, what's the economic benefit and impact, you know, of getting people around the city? Um, uh, giving, giving these shops and these retail outlets an opportunity to see an increase in foot traffic based on folks having access to, to, to a shuttle service that can get them to the shops. Not everybody can, you know, uh, not, not everyone has a car, not everyone can afford, um, a taxi or Uber. We have. We have our elderly, you know, um who are uh physically, you know, a- unable to get out on their own. Uh, but if we have a, if we had a shuttle service that can get around the city to the key points of the city, number one, we'll see uh more people being able to get to the city, we'll take an interest in shopping in the city. Number two, we'll have an opportunity for an an environmentally friendly vehicle or vehicles that really do not add, you know, uh pollution and and emissions to to the environment because they're they're running on battery powered or uh energy efficient systems, you know. So those are, those are part of the economic, um the the economic development plans that I really want to focus on, uh the shuttle service, um living wage jobs, and making sure that um uh when we're looking at what companies are looking to set up in Lawrenceville, we can invite companies who will actually add living wage jobs to the city, you know. Because we really got to take care of our residents, our legacy residents, the ones who've grown up here and so on and so forth. The the residents who are coming in, a lot of these folks who are coming in now are folks, and I, and this is through canvassing, this is through getting out and speaking of folks, a lot of folks are actually moving back to Lawrenceville, they've had the opportunity to live in California, live in New York, live in uh Pennsylvania, so on and so forth, amass a certain amount of wealth, and they're able to come back to Lawrenceville and buy those three hundred thousand dollar homes and live in those fifteen, sixteen hundred dollar one bedroom apartments. But what about our legacy residents? What about the residents in our community who's who who fares gentrification and and fares displacement? They need representation, they need someone who can address their concerns on the city council, and I want to be that person. I want to be that person that brings fair fairness and equitable uh decision-making on the city council.
That's amazing.
That is amazing, it sounds great, I got a couple of que- I got three questions, actually.
Uh huh, yes, ma'am.
I'm gonna start with the economic development side first, because that's my baby when it comes to that. My thing, this is my question, a lot of times when when they're planning to do things that pertains to economic development, um it always leaves out the small business owners, right? Is there a way, is there anything in your plan where we can bridge the gap between the small business owner and the companies that we are actually, that you're actually uh romancing to come into Lawrenceville? Because I feel like a lot of times when they're, when they're doing economic development, the small business owner that are located already get left out, kind of. I kind of posed this question at um, I was on a focus group with the Royant Project, that's a huge project, right?
Yeah.
And and so I know, I know that after we had our little focus group, they do have something on their website saying, hey, this is how you can get involved as a small business. But right in the city of Lawrenceville, is there a plan to bridge that gap between the small business owner and the companies that you were trying to attract to come into Lawrenceville?
Well, I plan, as as a small business consultant, and as someone who has worked uh over fifteen years with small businesses, with entrepreneurs, micro business owners, I do plan to work with small businesses first to find out, you know, what services and what resources are available to help our small businesses emerge from COVID successfully. We got to look at those businesses that have been harmed, revenues have been harmed, uh reduced revenue, reduced customer base, um you know, reduced profits, reduced labor, right, based on COVID, right? We have um many small business owners who are struggling now to hire people, right, and to get workers into their businesses. We also have entrepreneurs who are, you know, um faced with mental issues and mental fatigue and stress because it's a day-to-day um operation. We, I don't know if I'm gonna have my business open tomorrow, I don't know if I I can keep my doors open next week because I'm worrying now about now this new Omicron variant, now we might, we might be faced with a lockdown, people are afraid. We see all those flight cancellations over over the holidays, flight cancellations and and folks who um cancel their reservations because they're unwilling to travel. So this is, this is a reality for many of our small businesses, and small businesses drive the economy, not just the national economy, but the local economy. Sixty-six percent of all net jobs, right, are created by small businesses. So we really have to 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 be mindful of that, I want to be mindful of that. And I want to make sure that when we talk about economic development, now how do we give a small business uh owner who's a software developer, a small business manufacturer, a small business owner who is a a a in in the financial space, right? We have to look at who's in the space, who who do we have as small business operators in the city of Lawrenceville? The Gwinnett Entrepreneurship Center, which is a facility that recently had its ribbon cutting, I was privileged to be there. Um, the center manager, I've known her um about one or ten years, uh and um I I they they have a phenomenal individual who is going to manage that facility. But we have to look at those entrepreneurs who will take up residence in the Gwinnett Entrepreneurship Center. We also have to look at Cornerstone, right, which is a business, which is a facility that houses small business owners as well. So if we're looking at, you know, bringing living wage jobs to the city, let's first look at who do we have, right, in our presence in the in the Lawrenceville um area that we can encourage, we can find about, we can, we can determine what grants are needed, what resources are needed, you know, to help these small businesses grow. As we all know, um you look at Dell, you look at Microsoft, they all started like in a dorm room or in a garage, you know. These guys, um Facebook, yes, seriously, um left college in order to start Facebook, Mike Zuckerberg, right? So we all, we all know that many of these global conglomerates that we see today started in a dorm room, started in in somebody's bedroom, right, started in someplace like Cornerstone or like like the Gwinnett Entrepreneurship Center, and they they grew their brand, they grew their product, their service, they blossomed, they became national names and then became global names as they expanded. So, you know, we just have to look and see who we have among us. Um, I I and 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 my plan really is to engage our small business community because I want to be, I want to be sure that we can help them grow, we can help them find the resources, find access and connection to the resources that they need in order to grow. And and another thing, too, COVID nineteen, it it COVID nineteen and this pandemic is going to be with us for a while. So engaging um the small businesses and and engaging them and finding out um how we can help, how we can help them leverage the services like from the SBA. I've had working relationships with the SBA, uh Toni Dennison uh was one of, uh uh was a speaker at one of my conferences. Uh, she's now running the the Atlanta office, um the SBDC, you know, Small Business Development Center, the SCORE Office, right? Many of these agencies I've already built relationships with, and I want to be able to reach out to them and say, hey, how, let's now work with our small businesses in the in the in the Lawrenceville area. Because yes, we can see growth, we can see expansion from them.
Does the city of uh Lawrenceville have any uh working partnerships or relationships with those, with the Entrepreneur Center and uh and Cornerstone?
Yes, they do, um they uh to to an extent where um they're building that relationship. The um the city officials were out at the old, the 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 ribbon cutting of the Gwinnett Entrepreneurship Center, and of course, you know, we have Cornerstone here. But um, you know, the the relationships have been built, and we, uh and again, I'm, I can't speak for what has happened or transpired before me coming on to the city council, but I know they have built that relationship, and if they are um, you know, resources that are needed by these small businesses, if it cannot be managed by the city, then we look to the county or we look to neighboring um uh offices like the SBA and SBDC to bring them in to help these small businesses.
Okay.
I, you know, one of the things you said, you said something about bringing in companies that provide a living wage so that people can actually afford to live in Lawrenceville. And I wanted, I want to pose this question because if you look at South Lawn, which is downtown Lawrenceville, it's a new, right, right behind the amphitheater down there. When they first started building that that development, the houses were two hundred thousand dollars. And so, right after COVID, which was kind of weird because people were saying nobody had money during COVID, well, that jumped from two hundred thousand to four hundred thousand. And that literally, they had to literally put the tape on the two hundred thousand for four hundred, so although they were saying there was no money available, there was some money from somewhere, because not only was it about, not only did it jump, people were buying them. But for people who are still trying to figure out, I want to live here, how am I gonna afford that? I don't, what's the plan for affordable housing? Because I don't see, I don't see a plan awesome, I'm just gonna be honest with you. Every price, I went somewhere the other day, I forgot where I was, it was in Lawrenceville, it was a new subdivision, seven hundred thousand dollars. I want to say, by um, the subdivision over by, I think, Central Gwinnett. Seven hundred thousand dollars, I was like, what in the world? So I don't, I I don't see affordable housing, so is, what's the plan? Because I know you said that you wanted to, but the prices seem like they're just gonna up and up and up.
Uh huh, well, I know um in conversation, I know there are plans to work in um affordable housing for residents, right? Now, um, I I'm I'm not familiar with the name of the particular um housing community, but it's uh it was on Neil, the corner of Neil Boulevard and um uh and one twenty-four, and 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 that's, and that's the Housing Authority that handles that, right? Now, that's not, that's not the city, right? So the Housing Authority has their jurisdiction that they manage, right, for affordable housing for for uh residents in a, in a particular economic bracket. But as far as the city is concerned, um I I know that there, that there has, there is discussion out there about affordability, right? Now, um, we have to look at affordability in terms of um eh eh one's means to generate income, right? Because what's affordable to one person is not affordable to another individual, right? So I want to be able to to present a discussion, where we look at affordability in terms of phases, right? We can look at, okay, if you are generating anywhere from, anywhere up to forty thousand, let's look forty thousand a year, let's look at what what affordable, what, let's, let's discuss what affordability looks like for residents like that. If from forty to about eighty, eighty-five a year, let's look at what affordability means to an individual um generating that type of income, right? Anywhere from ninety a year and upwards, then we look at that. Because again, um what's affordable to John is not affordable to Jack, you know. And we really have to be mindful of that, because what I see, and 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 especially again, I am one who was actively knocking doors. I saw a lot of residents who were transplants from other states. So are we importing residents, you know, who can afford these properties? Well, what about our legacy residents, right? And especially those who, you know, for years have, you know, have generated income in a certain, you know, in a certain range. So um, I I I, and again, now that I will be active in these discussions, these are the things that I want to be mindful of, because economic equality is something that we really need to take a look at and really be mindful of, right? Um, I know there's a, there there are particular areas in Lawrenceville that have always felt overlooked, always felt underserved, because no one came out and 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 spoke to them and discussed anything with them because, you know, of of the the um predominant demographic in that particular area, right? So we we, that's something that I really want to be able to look at and be mindful of, because again, um we really, we really, really need to look at affordable housing, especially if we want to to reduce homelessness in Lawrenceville, you know, um reduce displacement. And we can't, we can't force people out of their homes because they can't afford to pay for it, or they can't afford to pay for an apartment. So that's something that, you know, I, you know, I really want to bring to the discussion.
Well, you um, you just created a question, because I was just about to say that the city was actually doing a good job, because I was about to mention the the Lawrenceville Housing Authority, but now you said that that's, that's a separate entity.
Yeah.
So um, I'm confused now, so uh, because I do know that the Housing Authority has been doing, like making inroads when it came down, come down to uh affordable housing in the, in in the, in Lawrenceville in particular. So is that a, a, so you said it's a separate entity, so do, is there any parts of the city that's connected to that, to that entity, or is it just completely separate, you guys have no input or anything on that?
When I first started campaigning, I had no idea. When you say the Lawrenceville Housing Authority?
Yeah.
I'm thinking it's all part of the city of Lawrenceville, managed by the city council. Now, I come from New York, you know, when you say New York City Housing Authority, that's managed by the city officials, right? It's not a separate entity. So I I really had to learn, because there were some things that I mentioned that I had to go back and correct because it was an educational process. But the Lawrenceville Housing Authority is a separate entity, right? Totally disconnected from the the city council and and the city management, right? So the Housing Authority, they receive grants for um their services and for the the residents in their, in their housing units, right? That's totally separate eh um from the city council, yes, so um we we wouldn't have any decision-making over that, any of, anything that they need to do, you know. But they are, but they are looking at um opportunities, like some of the developments you see now, um, some of them are being torn down because they're old and they're, and they're having new developments built. If you look at, if you look at Constitutional Boulevard, those new developments um now house the residents who were in those developments on Neil Boulevard and one twenty-four, across from that little church, right? So Hooper Renwick School is still there, right? But but the housing complex that was once, you know, um uh existent in that particular area, next uh, next to Hooper Renwick, those residents have been relocated now to that new development on Constitutional Boulevard. That's all managed by the Lawrenceville Housing Authority. So um, so they are, they are working to, and 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 those are, those new developments with with new amenities, updated amenities. So yeah, so they're working to do uh what they have to do for the residents in the housing, and I have to say, in the housing uh 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 units within the city of Lawrenceville.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, that's awesome.
You mentioned transportation, you know, we do, by by adding so many residents to Lawrenceville, the the congestion is becoming nuts. So if you come down, you you come down Sugarloaf or or Grayson Highway or Saneck Highway, one twenty-four, between the hours of four and six, you're stuck, so. How did, I I didn't even realize we had a transportation issue in the city of Lawrenceville, because it's so many cars on the road. But you said that you want to have these micro-transportation systems that you want to test out. And I know that did very well in Snellville, when they ran the college program, is that your intention? To the one that they ran in Snellville?
Well, it's gonna be similar, and it's going to operate only within the city limits of Lawrenceville. But what I, and I, and I, if you, if you look at my vision plan, you will see that I have plans for it to be connected to Gwinnett County Transit, right? So you can, and I've been on Gwinnett County Transit, because I've been without a vehicle, you know, back in the day, so, uh which was just as part of the story. So um, you can connect to Gwinnett County Transit, right, that will take you to Gwinnett Place Mall, and then you can transfer to a bus that takes you to Shambly Station, right? And at Shambly Station, you could be connected to Marty, right? Um, you know, as the shuttle service, what what I envision will take you anywhere around, like say, to the Gwinnett, uh Georgia Gwinnett College, right, and Gwinnett Technical College. So we have the students who want to be connected, and many students don't have vehicles of their own, right? So we want to be able to connect our students to the city of Lawrenceville, right? And I know there are plans in the, in the twenty forty uh vision plan, there are plans to connect students from those two um uni- universities to, um, because it's, it's because we want Lawrenceville, the city of Lawrenceville to be a college town, right? But that shuttle service will be able to um assist with that. Going to the Gwinnett Justice and Administration Center, GJAC, right? If you have to be at a court session or handle business there. Going to Northside Hospital, if you need to get to the hospital, right? Um, coming to downtown, coming to downtown Lawrenceville, if you want to get food to eat or to 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 patronize any business in the city, right? So we're loo- wha- what I'm proposing is strategic connection points, right? That the shuttle will be able to take folks around, and this is just so that folks can can feel good about not having to drive. If you don't want to drive to come to downtown, if you want to drive to to go to GJAC or something, you can feel free to get on a shuttle that will take you around to these points, right? Because it's not, not every time you want to get in your vehicle, right? So if we could work on a plan, right, to have a certain number of shuttles, right, on a schedule, a seven-day schedule, right, that are taking vehicles off the street, right? Alleviating that traffic, those major arteries that go through the city can see now reduced vehicular traffic, because now we have shuttles that residents and visitors to Lawrenceville can depend on, right? And again, it really helps those who are unable to, you know, get transportation, if they, if they don't have a car, if they can't drive, they don't have the finances to afford Uber or Lyft, um and and to those who are um um at a physical disadvantage and um can get on a shuttle, we have shuttles that, you know, that can help those, to have all those individuals, transport them around the city. Now, this helps now the businesses in the downtown area now see increased traffic coming through their doors, because for for those individuals who once had limited means for transportation. because for for those individuals who once had limited means of transportation, now can access the shuttles, you know? So that's, that's part of the plan. We just have to work out the nuts and bolts and how we can get it work. Um, you know, the financing, so on and so forth. You know, the the major discussions now come into play to 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 see this come to fruition, you know?
You know what I noticed when, when we talk about uh transit, uh I noticed a particular demographic that 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 a lot of people seem to overlook or don't mention. And and it's the, 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 the new employment demographic. And and I say that as, my first job, I took the bus, I took the bus to work. You know, uh, if I had to depend on my parents to give me two and four work, work, I probably wouldn't work because they was at work. And so, um, I was grateful because here in Gwinnett, if you have a sixteen-year-old, sixteen, seventeen-year-old that's, that's in high, may, I, I think they can start maybe at fifteen. I know in Texas we could. A fifteen, sixteen-year-old that doesn't have a car, how are they getting back and forth from work? You know, and uh again, I'm not, I'm learning the, as I have a high schooler now. Because by the time I got in uh my junior year in high school, I was able to leave school early. I was even leaving school at twelve or one o'clock to go to work. And so twelve or one o'clock, you and I at work, you know, you know, we at work, Audrey, we at work. So, you know, Michael calls, say, Dad, I gotta go to work. I I can't help him because I'm at work. And and so I think that will, you know, that's a major matter of fact, that Snellville, um, that Snellville micro-transit was a heavily used by the high school kids. Got to the point where, you know, it was, you know, they were starting to complain a little bit, but it was heavily used by the high school kids because it it allowed that, the same independence that we said it allowed the elderly. It it allows the youth to have it as well because now if I own a subway and, you know, I have employees that that are in high school, now, you know, they have no excuse why they couldn't get to work.
Yeah, and and you know, and and um, you know, Audrey, Audrey, coming from New Jersey, she knows. I, I mean, I come out from New York, from Brooklyn, and you, I mean, you don't own a car if you live in, if you live in the five boroughs. A car is a luxury, it's not a necessity. And you have buses that come every two, three, four minutes, and they come in sometimes two at a time. You could jump on the, 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 the train station that will take you from Brooklyn to the Bronx, to Queens, to different parts of Queens, different parts of Brooklyn. I mean, if you ever looked at a New York City subway map, you would get cross-eyed because there's so many different arteries and pathways that you can get around New York. And then you connect to Long Island Railroad that brings you out to Long Island. And then, you know, you you have somebody that take you upstate New York, whatever. You get, then you got the uh New Jersey Transit or the PATH train that takes you into New Jersey. So you have different means of travel. Whenever I go back to New York, which is sometimes once or twice a year, I don't rent a car because I don't really need to, I don't need to rent a car, you know? But if, I would love to see the same opportunity here. I would love to see, you know, residents be able to get where they need to get and not have to worry about how they're gonna get from point A to point B because they don't have transportation, you know?
No, you know, Austin, it's funny you say that because I did live in Jersey and I lived in Maplewood. So where I lived in Maplewood, there was a train station that went straight into New York. And I remember going into, I had a meeting at the um Pennsylvania Hotel. And Pennsylvania Hotel. So the Pennsylvania Hotel is right across the street from Madison Square Garden. Right off inside, up inside of Madison Square Garden. I just got out the train and walked across. I didn't want to drive. Now, I don't mind driving to New York. But this particular day, I did not feel like driving to New York. Kind of like I feel about going to Atlanta most of the time. Like, I would love to go out to jump on a train and just go to Atlanta and just stand and jump on the train and come back, which is what I did. Went right over to Madison Square to the hotel, went at lunch, did my meeting and jumped on the train and came right back home. I parked my car at the train station and I came on home. I can't wait till the day when we can do that. Now, I know a lot of people are so opposed to the whole transit, you know, Martha Plan and all that stuff. I personally, I, like you said, we grew up there. That's how we roll.
Yeah.
So we drove in Jersey, but when it was time to go to the city, it was like, I ain't driving to New York because they drive crazy. Jump on the train and go over there. So I think that's amazing. Um, even when I think about the elderly, um, a lot of times they don't feel comfortable, you know, in an Uber because they don't know that they feel like they're strange. I have, my uncle's elderly and we just got him very comfortable going in Lyft. He's very comf-, but it took a minute. It took a minute to the point that he, he was in Jersey, so he had no problem jumping on a bus, you know, like.
Well, you know, they told us, you know, they told us growing up, you know, don't speak to strangers, stranger danger.
Right.
Now we jumping in stranger cars.
Yeah, yeah.
So I, I, I feel like that's gonna be a benefit for the elderly as well because it's a lot different getting in a car with one person than getting on a bus with twelve. It's a lot, you know, a lot different. So I feel like
Out there in Jersey, New York, don't y'all taxi!
If you're in Manhattan, if you're in Manhattan, yeah, you know, you drive up and down, you could, you could hail a cab wherever. But then again, it's the same thing. You got like three hundred taxis on the corner, you know? They all lined up. So New York, and New York is, and and Washington DC, um, I, I, you know, I, I know, I, yeah, you know, um, I think Chicago, um, you know, and so we have, we have cities that, I mean, these are major cities, yeah. But we have cities that are are transportation friendly and they look out for their residents. And just because that we are a smaller city doesn't mean that we can't have the same thing. Now, we might not need a, a train station, you know, going through Lawrenceville or anything. But if we can provide a means to increase opportunities or access to transportation and access to, you know, like let's say the hospital and downtown and sc- and and the colleges, that would be great. Because the colleges are not only um a place where you go to learn, but they're also employers, right? Georgia Gwinnett College is an employer. Gwinnett Technical College is an employer. GJAC is an employer. Northside is an employer, right? So we have to really, really think about how we can get our residents more access to transportation. Yeah.
So, you know, I want to, how can the public, how can our community reach out to you to support you? They have questions? Because I feel like, um, although you are at the, as city councilman, there are some things that we probably be able to do too. What can the community do to help, help you move the vision forward and how can they reach out to you?
How can they read your, your vision?
Yeah. All through my campaign, I have been encouraging residents to reach out to me, to contact me. One way is um through my email, right? The email is austin.thompson@lawrencevillega.org. Okay, that's one. My phone number, I always give out my phone number, is four zero four five eight seven three nine four nine. My campaign website is now being uh transformed into a repository of information. So all the information about my journey and and ways in which folks can connect with me will be on voteforaustinthompson.com. All right, that's vote for, F O R, austinthompson.com. And also on the third, on the, on the first and third Saturday of every month, Coffee with Councilman Thompson will be at the Eurogourmet Cafe. Um, and I will be there the fifteenth of January. Um, and then February will start with the first and and the third Saturday. So, um, the Eurogourmet Cafe, which is four eighty-eight um Gwinnett Drive, on the, sits on the corner of Scenic and and Gwinnett Drive. So that's an opportunity for anyone in the city to come and sit down with me, have a cup of coffee with me, let's talk about Lawrenceville. You know, this is a, this is a different dynamic, other than a phone call, an email. This is an opportunity to sit one-on-one or how, how, how many ever want to to RSVP and come sit with me? And let's talk Lawrenceville. Let's talk about how we're gonna advance Lawrenceville forward. I don't want this to be my journey. I want this to be our journey because this victory was not my victory. This was our victory. I didn't let myself, yeah, I, my one vote, yeah, yeah, yeah. Every vote counts, right? Even your own, even your own. But you voted for me and you put me into this office. So I definitely want to engage and I will still continue going around the community to speak to individuals, you know? Because I'm, I'm, I'm an engaging person. I love to engage folks, you know? In COVID, we've been forced to do this virtual thing over screens and laptops and so on and so forth. But I'm a face-to-face person and, you know, we can stand six feet of defi-, six feet of distance and mass and all that and still have a conversation. But these are the different ways in which folks can reach me. And I encourage them, don't sit back with issues and challenges and don't reach out. I am making it public that I am open for conversation, I am open for engagement, and I want individuals to reach me. I may not have all the answers at the time when you contact me, but I, rest assured, I will research and get back to you with the answers. I don't like to make up answers. I want to give you the answer that really matters and the, and the, and the, and the answer that's factual, you know? So I have, I don't have a problem with telling you, let me research that and get back to you. I don't have a problem with that, but please engage me. I'm open.
When are the uh city council meetings?
City council meetings are the last Monday of every month, the final Monday at every month at City Hall. And it's on the fourth floor in the city council chambers at seven o'clock PM.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Well, thank you, Austin.
Yes.
Thank you so much.
This has been amazing. Thank you again for being our guest. Listen, guys, I hope you enjoyed this as much as we enjoy having Austin on the show. He has a great vision for Gwinnett Cl- County, I mean, Lawrenceville and Gwinnett County. I'm so happy to be a part of that. Um, I look forward to pushing your vision as far as I can help you push it. So I'll be sure to contact you pretty soon. Probably like, oh God, that's the lady again from that podcast.
Not at all, not at all. Yeah, I really appreciate you all for inviting me on your platform to engage you and also to, you know, engage your listeners. And I want to wish you all much success, immense success as you go forward on this new journey uh with Popcorn and Conversation. Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. All right. So listen, that's all we got. We'll have another great guest next week. So be sure to tune in. Listen, twenty twenty-two, we bringing it live. We bringing it here live to Popcorn and Politics. So make sure you join us every Sunday at one PM live. We are streaming on American One Radio, Facebook, YouTube, LinkedIn, Twitter and Roku. So we're everywhere. So be sure to check it out. But don't fret, if you miss any episode of the show, just go to popcornandpolitics.com and you can listen to the past episodes there. All right. Thanks again, Austin. Thanks again, Derek. Listen, you guys have a wonderful Sunday. I will be back again next Sunday, one PM, same time, same place. Until next time, my friends, make it a great day. Bye, y'all.
You've been listening to Popcorn and Politics. What's the Real Deal? Hosted by Audrey Bell Kearney and Derek J. Wilson. Be sure to subscribe to the show and share it with your family and friends. To support the show, visit us on the web at www-popcornandpolitics.com. Connect with us on Facebook at Progressive Popcorn and on Instagram at Popcorn Politics Podcast.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. But I'm matching though.